Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our second and last meeting for October 2018. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 8, 2018, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. McTirren.
Here.
Ms. Ogden.
Here.
President Nigde.
Here. Okay. I would like to now call upon the members of the American Legion to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Is there any members here, please join us. Would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the greatest country on the earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 35 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV, Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Okay, now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular in closed session of October 2nd, 2018? I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great. Okay, moving on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone. The first thing I'd like to talk about is volunteering here in Summit. We need volunteers to serve on our city boards and committees. Every November, council and I review volunteer applications and we appoint new members to the boards. Terms vary from one to five years. Please go to cityofsummit.org for a list of the volunteer opportunities, and that's where you can fill out an application. I highly encourage people to, strongly encourage people to volunteer. It's a great way to get to know your neighbors, of how the city works, and its meaningful work, and frankly, this city is powered by volunteers. Most of the people up here are volunteers. Reminder to vote: Election Day is Tuesday, November 6. The deadline to register is today. At 9:00 p.m., the Clerk's Office is open until 9:00 o'clock tonight, so please register to vote. If you're unable to get to the polls on Election Day and would like to request a vote by mail ballot, please note that all requests must be received seven days before any and all elections. Any voter who fails to apply by the deadline may apply in person at the Union County Election Office on any day up to 3:00 p.m. of the day before Election Day. The Halloween Parade in Summit will take place on Saturday, October 27, at 2:45. Everyone will assemble behind 25 to Forest Avenue, and then march to the Village Green. And there'll be costume contest and entertainment until 5:00. The rain date is Sunday, October 28. Another Halloween festivity is the Scream on the Green movie night on Friday, October 26. It's a very fun family event, and it has bonfires, smores, and food trucks. This year, the movie is Peter Pan, and there'll be a pre-movie performance by the cast of Broadway &amp; Beyond at 6:00 p.m., and the movie starts at dusk. The other day, I was happy to go to the Fire Department's open house, and thank you, Chief Evers and all the firefighters for hosting such a fun and informative event. The children particularly loved the car being dismantled. It was a crowd favorite. I was able to help quite a few residents register for general and emergency notifications. It's a great way to get information from the city. You go to the cityofsummit.org and click on notifications, and a whole list of things you can get information about, whether it's trash and recycling, council meetings, road closures, anything. So you just sign up for that, and then an email will be sent to you, or a text automatically. So I encourage you to sign up for notifications. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On to our Administrator, Michael Rogers, please.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Curbside leaf collection is continuing through December 7 or the first major snowfall. Please place leaves in paper biodegradable bags curbside. Property owners should not rake or blow leaves into piles in the street. Also, please do not include twigs, branches, or other yard debris in leaf bags. At the end of this week, there will be new recycling bins, a bin at the municipal transfer station for soft plastics, including plastic grocery bags, dry cleaning bags, newspaper sleeves, produce and cereal bags, among others. A full list will be available on the city website. We are also expanding our used tennis ball recycling program. Recycling bin is currently in place at Memorial Field. Two additional bins are being added at the Summit Tennis Center and at Teplock Field. Thank you to the members of Department of Community Services and the Recycling Advisory Committee for your work in implementing these programs. And congratulations to an employee of ours, Donna Getty, from the Department of Community Services, who attended the International Code Council's Permit Technician Academy last May, and she received notification she passed a national professional certification exam. According to the city construction official, it's a very difficult exam, so we're proud of her, and congratulations, Donna. The Summit Board of Health is warning that a potential measles outbreak, following confirmation from the New Jersey Department of Health of a case of measles in a traveler returning to the U.S. from Israel. The traveler was diagnosed with measles and potentially exposed people in various New York and New Jersey state venues between October 4 and October 11, 2018. A list of locations where possible exposure could have occurred is available on the city website, along with information on symptoms associated with the measles virus. And finally, October 31 is the annual deadline for residents to renew digital permits for parking and the municipal disposal center. Please visit cityofsummit.org/parking to obtain a new permit or renew your existing permit online. That's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I don't have anything more to add. We're moving on. We have a swearing-in ceremony. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Officer Scott Collins Scarpello grew up in Madison, New Jersey. He graduated from Madison High School. While in high school, Officer Scarpello was both an all-state lacrosse player and an all-Morris County football player. While playing for Madison High School football, the team went on to win two state championships. Upon graduation, Officer Scarpello was enrolled at Rutgers University, where he graduated in 2017 with a bachelor's degree in human resource management. As a student at Rutgers University, Officer Scarpello was a member of the Rutgers Lacrosse Team, where he was part of the Big Ten Conference recipient of the Scholar Athlete, sorry, was part of the Big Ten Conference, recipient of the Scholar-Athlete Award, and a four-year letter winner. Officer Scarpello is currently furthering his education by pursuing a master's of science degree in homeland security at Fairleigh Dickinson University. While attending college, Officer Scarpello joined the ranks of the Madison Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter in 2015. He received his firefighter-one certification and would actively participate in emergency response drills, training, and calls for service. Officer Scarpello attended the Mercer County Basic Police Training Course in April 2018. He graduated with his fellow classmates on August 24, 2018, in the 19-18 class. While in the police academy, Officer Scarpello was the recipient of Marksmanship Award for Firearms Excellence, with receiving scores of 100% for all firearms qualifications. In his spare time, Officer Scarpello enjoys spending time with his parents, brother and sister, and friends, visiting the beach, and is an avid sports fan.
I, Collins Scarpello.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York, New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
If there's any folks who are members of the public who would like to speak on a matter that is not on the council's agenda, come on up and give your name and address, and listen to comments, questions. Anyone? All right. We'll consider that closed. Ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance for, oh, this is an ordinance for introduction. I'm sorry.
You want to just take a break, that's fine.
Oh, there's a break. If anybody wants to leave. Sorry.
They have to go back on the road.
Yeah, go, go, go. Thank you all for coming. Ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance for introduction 5930?
An ordinance amending the Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Meetings of the Common Council, Section 2-2.1, Rules of the Common Council.
Thank you. Councilwoman McTirren.
Thank you, Council President. So this is an ordinance that we're looking to introduce this evening. The hearing date would be on November 7, 2018. This ordinance would reorganize the different committees that council people sit on that basically oversee the various areas of city government. Currently, there are six different areas that council people sit on, and by tradition, usually one councilperson chairs each individual, one committee, and a second councilperson sits on it as a second. What became clear over the course of several years was that the committees didn't necessarily align very well with the departments in the city government. So the thought was to rejigger the different committees in order to, one, give council people maybe a little bit more breadth in their individual responsibilities, and maybe even out some of the responsibilities from different council people, and, secondly, have the committees really align better with the parts of the city government. So that's what this ordinance looks to do. Currently, there are, as I said, six different committees. There's Buildings and Grounds, there's Finance, there's Law, there's Safety, there's General Services, and Public Works. What this ordinance would do would be to replace that with a committee called the Capital Projects and Community Services Committee, and I guess as all these will get acronyms over time. That committee will focus really on the community services area in government here that does so much to keep our roads plowed, garbage picked up, fixing our streets, et cetera. That will also be paired with looking at capital projects. The vast majority of capital projects are community services related, so there was the thought that there was a lot of synergy there, and that committee would be responsible for sort of vetting different capital projects that various groups would want to do, even outside of community services. The second committee is Safety and Health. This would basically be the same as the Safety Committee now, but with the added responsibility to oversee health in the community as well. We have a Board of Health, and this committee would oversee that as well. The Finance Committee is probably, right now, the committee that has the most responsibility, certainly the longest meetings, I would think. And currently, it's called the Finance and Personnel Committee. Effectively, this ordinance would strip out personnel from the Finance Committee, so it would do pretty much the same as it had been doing without its oversight of personnel, but it would be responsible for the operating and capital budgets, bonding, any sort of tax appeal, dealing with our insurance carrier, our auditors, all that good stuff, but without the added onus of having to deal with labor issues, which would fall under the new committee Law and Labor. So the Law Committee and Labor Committee would do what the Law Committee does now, which is look at codes, and we have, there's a resolution, for instance, later on about liquor licenses, things like that, but in addition, would deal with contract negotiations, lawsuits, personnel disciplinary actions, personnel issues, that sort of thing. The fifth committee is Community Programs and Parking Services. The oversight is pretty much in the name of those two areas of the city. And then finally, the Administrative Policy and Community Relations Committee, which would work closely with the city administration. There's a lot of sort of behind-the-scenes activities that go on in the office of the city administrator, the Clerk's Office, there's, and this would really align with those functions, which kind of currently sort of don't really fit well anywhere. So that committee would be responsible for that. What we'll see going forward, if this ordinance does pass, is a resolution probably at the reorg meeting, because we'll have to look at all the volunteer committees as well, because currently they're staffed by different people on the existing committees. They have liaison from council. We'll have to look at that as well, but that will come later on in the year. So with all of that, I move this ordinance for introduction.
Do I hear a second? Great. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Fox.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. McTirren.
Aye.
Ms. Ogden.
Aye.
President Nigde.
Aye. Okay, moving on to resolutions. First one is Law. Councilwoman McTirren.
Thank you, Council President. So this resolution looks to grant a liquor, it's a liquor license transfer to All My Friends LLC, which is the Summit House Restaurant, for those sitting at home. It's basically, for those who've been down Maple Avenue recently, where Summit House is, the Mexican restaurant there is no longer there. Summit House is looking to expand into that space. I guess they must be doing well, which is great to see. So that space, and in addition, there's a little, there was a little storefront in there as well. So what this resolution would do would take their existing liquor license, which is, which currently covers the existing part of Summit House, it would expand it to allow Summit House to serve beverages in those other parts that the restaurant will be expanding into. And with that, I move this resolution.
Second. Right. The discussion's among members of council. Any comments from members of the public? Further discussion? As Councilwoman McTirren said, it's good news to hear that Summit House is doing so well, and that they're able to expand. So for those who are wondering what would happen to that space, we already know it's going to be filled. There are other spaces along Springfield Avenue that we're expecting to have either retail or restaurants come into. Hopefully, in the near future, we'll be seeing those things also occur. So that's all good news for our downtown. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great. Finance and Personnel. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is to authorize the fee contract purchase of a phone system not to exceed This is to replace the phone systems that cover really all of the city areas, including City Hall, the Police Department, the Community Center, the Public Works Garage, the Transfer Station, and the Recycling Center. It means it'll be a new digital phone system. It's compatible with the Fire Department telephone system, as well as the dispatch system, so it's going to be definitely a big upgrade from what we have now. And this was included in the capital budgets of both 2017 and 2018. And the current, it is just under $75,000, so it actually should come in under the budgeted amount, so that's good news, too. I move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Great. Any comments from members of council, questions? Comments from, questions from members of the public? Further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Okay, we have a couple of Buildings and Grounds. Buildings and Grounds, number one, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Buildings and Grounds, one, is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant to the New Jersey DOT Bike Ways Program for work on Phase One of the Park Line project. And this is a section of the Park Line that has, that runs from Broad Street to Morris Avenue, and it's already been, it's been cleared and is somewhat in existence, but it needs, it needs to be upgraded. And the point of this project is to install permeable pavements, to have dedicated bike lanes and striping benches, wayfinding, signage, fencing, landscaping, and other things that will beautify this area. This section is already in use by the public, and so it's really, the purpose is to make it more attractive. And the city, the grant application seeks $350,000 for Phase One, and it does not require any matching funds from the city. I move this resolution.
Second. Okay. Any comments, questions from members of council? Councilwoman Gould.
Thank you, Council President. Well, I've already discussed this with Councilwoman Fox and with Mr. Cascase, so most of my questions have been answered, but I thought I should bring them up anyway. I was surprised that we were making grant applications for the Park Line Foundation before we'd had the meeting to discuss the Park Line Foundation with the input from the residents. And I learned, well, I could leave it, I mean, you could probably explain better what I've learned from that.
Well, I think, do you want to take that one, Paul, since that came up?
Paul, why don't you come up and explain?
Thank you, Paul.
The timing and everything.
So the grant was initiated through the Park Line Foundation, and basically what they're looking to do is to apply for grant money to improve the area that is currently Phase One of the Park Line from Broad Street to Morris Avenue. And that would include permeable pavement, some fencing if it's needed, some screening. This grant is specific to bikeways that are actually, they're bikeways that are not in, next to vehicular traffic, so they're looking to connect trails. We did apply for this last year. We were unsuccessful, but it's basically for bikeways that do not have conflict with vehicular traffic. So that is why we applied for this grant. If there are other grants out that are available for other bikeways that are associated or roadways, we could, we would definitely look into that. I don't know if that answered the question.
Well, I think it answers why we should do it, but I still think perhaps we shouldn't be applying for grants until we have the community involvement. That's my number one question, which is probably...
So these grants are on an annual basis? So if it was awarded, it'd probably only be awarded in several months from now. We would hear back from them. So at that point, we are looking to have a public meeting within the next month. So this grant, we would know more or less if it would be awarded after. And as you know, if it wasn't, if that section wasn't going to move forward, the Park Line, you don't have to accept the grant. You could always not accept the grant if you decide.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, but I think it's important to note that this is for Phase One of the Park Line. So this is the part that's already there. And I think the community outreach, a lot of that is going to be concerned, not just with beautification of Phase One, but also if there is going to be a Phase Two or possibly a Phase Three. So, you know, we have, the Phase One is up and running. People take their dogs there, they walk there. Kids are using it to get from one place to the other, and this is a grant that's available to make it look nicer. And so we're using it, it's there, it's part of our city landscape already, and we should look for outside money to fix it up.
Steve?
All right, two questions, kind of following what Mike said. Will the bike, you said it's for non, doesn't connect to streets or anything like that. How will the bikes get, you know, is it expected that they park in the parking lot, or will they have access to, you know, off of Broad Street or something to that effect?
So, yeah, it would, you know, it'd be expected that they actually use the parking lot to enter that gated area, that they're using now to actually walk now.
And the other, the other one was, what if we don't get the grant? Would this project not move forward, or would they go for private funding elsewhere?
They would need to get private funding to move the project forward, but we always look for grant money to subsidize any funding, so this was an opportunity. As I said, last year, excuse me, it was unfortunate, we did, we weren't able to receive the money they, they did not award it, so we'll continue to go after grants even if we're not awarded the money, because it is, I don't want to say it's free money, but it's money that isn't being funded through the city budget.
Paul, does that have a matching component for the city?
No.
Okay. And does the grant application require us to move forward with any other sections? Is it conditional upon us moving forward with anything?
No. But this grant, they, and I think one of the reasons why it was difficult last year for it to be awarded is, they look for projects that there is going to be continuation, like way continuation, so knowing that we will have a long-term plan, we have a better chance of this year receiving the grant money. Now, there's only a million dollars that they offer through this localized grant for this, so it's very, very competitive, and they, I believe they award up to like five grants, so the estimate for that section there was about $350,000, so we're hoping that, you know, they will award it this year.
Okay. Any other, Beth, please.
I just want to reiterate what Matt says. Like, I am, I'm okay with going forward with this grant because it would be awarded after the public comments, and if something comes up in the public comments that would, you know, would speak against us going forward with this grant, I want to, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we would be able to refuse the grant or decline the grant, because we said at the last council meeting, it's very important to me, and I know the other members of council, that we do have the public involved, and we do hear the public comments on all aspects of the Park Line.
Yeah, you could choose not to accept it.
Marjorie.
I've heard what you, what all of you have said, but I think one point that really does need to be emphasized is this portion has already been built, and, you know, some of us were not in a know, some of us were not in agreement with that when it happened, but it's done. And so, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done on it to make it something that really is attractive. So I think to leave it the way it is doesn't benefit the community. If we can get grant money, I think that's a great thing. And we will get input, and no work would get started on this project until we get that input from the public. So I think we're, I think, I hear what you're saying.
I agree. And I just want to say, I don't anticipate there being any, you know, major objections to this portion and to beautifying this portion, but I don't know, because we haven't had the public comments yet. And I don't, I personally live in that neighborhood. I don't know what impact that might have on residents. And we did promise the residents that we would have this public hearing and listen to all their concerns. I don't anticipate, based on this grant and what it's trying to do, that there would be a lot of opposition to this, this portion of the Parkline that's already in use being beautified and being improved. But I don't know. And something might come up during the public comments that we weren't anticipating. So I, that was one of the things that I wanted to know as well, and I'm glad to hear that answer.
Okay. With that, let me open up for public comments. Maybe they're public.
Mayor John McCucci DeFonzo, I live at 12 Washington Avenue in Summit. Bryant Park is practically in my front yard, and I cannot believe, Ms. Little, that you can sit there and say that nobody has opposed this thing when I have been opposing it since the minute I heard about it. And granted, my father was sick, and I was taking care of him until he passed away last year. And as soon as I read all this stuff going on in Summit Patch, I got on the bandwagon. So I don't understand how you can sit there and say, nobody's opposed it, when I've been voicing my concerns from the minute I heard about it. I, I don't get it. I don't understand how we can be grant, voting on this grant when we have opposed the residents. Am I right, Bernadette? We've been opposing this from the minute I heard about it. So how can you sit there and say, and Mr. McTiernan, I did some of my homework. How can you sit on that board and say that you're not sure about this, and other board members are not sure about this, when you sit on the additional board member, you're listed as an additional board member for the Summit Parkline?
Through you, Council President?
Yes, please.
Normally- Who wants to respond first?
I'll just respond first, since I was called out first. I didn't say that you didn't oppose it. I didn't say that anyone didn't oppose it.
Didn't, didn't you just say that nobody-
Excuse me, I'm speaking now.
Wait, let's, let's do, first of all, the way that this works is not a, this is not an interrogation of people up here. That's, this is not what we do. Public gets to comment, public gets to question. You can certainly, you know, characterize what your opinions are, but we, we don't have a back and forth where people start yelling at each other. This is not, Summit does not operate that way. And we're not going to operate that way here. Not under my watch. Okay? That's not what we're going to do. We're going to do it in a civilized and civil manner. Everybody's going to be respectful here. Okay? Everybody here is a volunteer. Nobody gets paid. Okay? Take our, our own time, and we spend it serving the community. And I don't want anyone here attacked. Okay? You can disagree with people, don't attack them. Everybody has to be respectful. That's how Summit operates. That's how we're going to operate.
Four board members sat there and said that this was not a done deal. Go ahead. I'm listening.
This is not-
No, no. Whoa, 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 whoa. Hold up here. This is not that you get to do that, say, I'm listening, or whatever. I'm not being disrespectful here to people. We're not going to tolerate that. Okay?
I want to-
Your questions go through me, and I get to call on people here, and they get to answer as they see fit. And we're not having a debate here. This is not a debating society. I want that very clear. Councilwoman Little.
I just want to clarify my, my earlier comment, because it was just mischaracterized, I believe. And I said that I didn't anticipate in the public session there would be opposition to the part of the Parkline that this grant covers. This is the part of the Parkline that's already in use from Overlook Hospital into the downtown, and this grant merely covers improving of the pavement and beautification of that section. This does not include any of the section that I know that there is significant community opposition to in Phase Two and Three, the parts that go through the neighborhood and go down into the areas that you're talking about near Bryant Park. This is the part that goes from Overlook into the downtown, that area, and this grant only covers that section. I don't, I don't anticipate, I said, I didn't say that there was no opposition. I said I didn't anticipate any opposition from the public to the section and the work that is proposed in this grant. But I said that I didn't want, that I wanted to make sure that if there was opposition, that I wasn't anticipating during the public comments, that I wanted to make sure that we had the right to refuse the grant. So I, I would just want to be very clear that in no way did I say that I didn't think there was any opposition from the public, or that I have never heard any opposition from the public, because clearly that's not true. I've listened to you many times and other members from the public. We've been, we've been not only here in council at public sessions, but we have actually gone out into the community and had listening sessions where we have also engaged in this significantly. So I don't want my comments to be mischaracterized without a rebuttal from me to clarify what I, what I said earlier.
Thank you. Councilwoman McTiernan?
Yeah, just to, through you, Council President, I have never hid the fact that I'm a big proponent of the project.
But you serve on the board.
Excuse me, miss.
Whoa.
Okay? I have never hid the fact, I am a proponent of the project. That being said, I, when I was council president, I was very open to public input. We've, this has been done in phases. I'm not sure that this project's going to get done. Doesn't, you know, if, if they could show why this is not a good idea, and neighbors don't like it, if the community, if you weigh it that the community is more against it than for it, then I'll take that into consideration on how I vote. But that's, I'm not going to hide the fact that I don't believe in the project. I sit on the board as a liaison from council, and I support the project. They asked me would I sit on the, the board? I said, yes. That's not a conflict. That's, I'm, I'm getting involved in my community in something that I support. And to, to imply otherwise, I'm not quite sure what your implication is. You see how I vote. I'll discuss why I'm voting that way, and that's it. Thank you, Council President. Thank you. Okay. If you want to finish your comments.
I think, yeah, I, I think the public needs to know what the intentions were in this feasibility study that I read, that everybody shot me down at the meeting at the high school. And if it's not going to happen, then it shouldn't be on their website. It shouldn't be on Parkline.org.
So, so, so just so people who are following this can understand the context, we had a council in the road session at the high school, library. You came up and you read from passages from a feasibility study that was done for the Parkline Foundation. As I indicated to you at that time, and I will restate what I said, that is a private, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization. The reports that they may get from their consultants that they decided to hire has no precedential value, does not influence, does not have an impact on this council or any other council unless those council members decide to take that as meaning something. By itself, that is a document or a private entity. Any private entity or group of citizens can write a report, have somebody else write a report on their behalf, come to conclusions. But that does not mean that we as council have to adopt it as being our own. And so the reason we said to you at that meeting, and I will say it again, you read it to us and you made it seem as if that was something that we as council, either predecessor council of ours, or we current constituted council, had either obtained with city money, or as a city consultant, or had adopted. Neither one of which is true. And I don't want any mischaracterization and misunderstanding. I can understand why the public gets somewhat confused with the Parkline issue. And the reason that it's been confused, and this is the reason we did this memorandum of understanding this year, the reason the public has been confused is that prior to this year, we've had this kind of ad hoc decision-making where the Parkline Foundation would do something, but council would later on ratify it or not ratify it, and things would seem unclear. Who's taking the role? And when we talk about Parkline, it seems like the cities, is the city doing it? Sometimes it's the foundation, sometimes it's both. I get why there's a lot of confusion out there. But let us be clear moving forward. There is an organization. It's the Parkline Foundation. It has a bunch of volunteers who have decided to create it and do this project. The city has an easement right from the county for this area called the Parkline, which is a former freight train area. Parkline Foundation does not have a legal right to that property. It doesn't have an easement, it doesn't have a license, it doesn't have fee ownership, it doesn't have anything towards it. That means that they can propose, they can suggest, they can say, we will advocate for funding. But at the end of the day, it is this body or a subsequent body sitting here that will determine what can and cannot happen there.
Sir, when you're, when you're voting on a grant to continue work on this thing, to me, that says-
It seems like it's a fait accompli.
It's a done deal.
Yeah. So, so what it would seem, and, and, and I'll do this, I would argue that for, somebody sitting here would say, oh, look, you guys are going to vote on this, you're going to agree to try to get grant money. That means you really intend to vote ultimately to get a Parkline done.
That's what it seems like. Absolutely.
That's, and that could be a reasonable conclusion that you could reach. And I can understand why certain members of council here may say, you know what, I'm going to vote against this, because I think that may give the wrong impression to the public. You're assuming all of us are going to vote for it. Maybe some of us will not. Maybe all of us will. I don't know. We'll find out when we vote. But it, I can understand what you're saying. Here's the thing. What, what people here who are talking about it are saying two things. One, we applied for this grant before, we never got it. So we may not get it. So it's, it's, it's immaterial, it may be material, it may not be. Second, even if we get the grant, we don't have to accept it. And third, the area that's under consideration for this grant is an area that's not in the area that has been contested over. It is in the area by the Overlook Hospital where basically it has already been created. There's already things on the ground. The question is, do you beautify it, or do you leave, leave it in the ramshackle state that it is in? That's the question. So people can vote that they wish, but I don't want you to interpret this. It's certainly not my vote, which should be interpreted either way that I may vote, that it is an indication either I'm going to, I'm close-minded about, you know, the Parkline one way or the other. We're going to have a workshop. We're going to have public input. That's what we did this year that is different from any other previous year. We said, we're going to create a mechanism to have the public involved. We want to hear people's ideas.
Sir, work has already started on this. Jeflo has been clearing the way. I was there when they were working on it.
The, Paul, come on up and address the issue of, of clearing.
I would just like to encourage everyone to read the feasibility study on the Parkline's website.
So through you, Council President, Jeflo is a contracted tree expert hired by JC P&amp;L. JC P&amp;L has a utility easement, and they have to clear vegetation and brush away from their transmission lines.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, please.
Just one point of clarification. We have, there have been public workshops done before this year. There, there were at least two that I can remember that the public was able to come to to see the initial plans and things like that. So this is not something that's just popped up all of a sudden in a vacuum.
And to, in fairness, you are right, because there was also the December meeting of last year. I recall that there was an entire display given here.
And then I believe the, the prior year, there was something at, on Summit Avenue that-
Right. And, and during the vote on the, the license agreement with the county, there was an extensive discussion about it. Not, you know, regardless of, of, of the context, there was a discussion of it. Anybody else who has a public comment about this particular resolution, now's your chance. Okay? This is that close. Further discussion by members of council. Matt?
Thank you, Council President. So, yes, first of all, everything has been out in the open, and Councilman McTiernan and I fully support his fairness in, in this process. I just want to say that. Second, yeah, this, this, this is why I was a little taken aback that we were applying for a grant before we had moved on to this phase. I think I understand now that it's for a phase that's not residential and for something that's already in place. But I think we should be very mindful of the appearance of having it be a fait accompli, as you mentioned. So, thank you.
And I will reiterate, I mean, I don't consider this to be a fait accompli, because I think you can apply for a grant, you can say you don't want the grant ultimately. And more importantly, we are committed to having a transparent process over this and to have the fact that people get a chance. There, the other issues involved in this, we've heard people. There's parking issues involved. There's certainly safety and privacy concerns issues involved. There's issues dealing with first responders being able to get to people there. The cost issues involved, the, the maintenance issues involved. There's a bridge to be built, if it is. There's lots of things. And as Councilman McTiernan said, it may not happen. But we're going to discuss all those issues, and they're going to happen in this year. We're going to have a discussion. We're going to have folks come from the Parkline Foundation, and we're going to have people from the city staff come, talk about it with the public, get your input, and then from there, we'll see where we go. Okay? Now for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, moving on. Buildings and grounds, number two, Councilwoman Fox.
This resolution authorizes a grant application submission to the Investors Foundation for the Hometown Heroes Banner Program. And this council has authorized a second year of the Hometown Heroes Banner Program for 2019. In 2018, 50 banners honoring 100 veterans and active-duty members of the military were displayed on DeForest Avenue. And the funding for this project was through public donations. The first year of the program was extremely successful. We, and we've already got about 35 applications, I believe, for this upcoming year. And so we have expanded the program for year two with an additional 50 banners, recognizing another 100 veterans and active-duty military. The program will have additional costs associated with the purchase of additional banners and brackets. So we are seeking authorization for the submission of a grant in the amount of $5,000 through Investors Foundation. This grant does not require a match from the city, and I enthusiastically move this resolution.
Second.
Great. Comments from members of council? Before we open up the public, all I will say is this is such a great program. Absolutely wonderful program. We had such a great turnout for folks who signed up for the first, when we first did this, at the beginning of this year, we had already a waiting list. It's incredible. I think what the most important part of it is not beyond, of course, honoring the veterans, is the bringing the community together and recognizing that we're all in this together. And I think that's really important. That I'll open up to the public. Come on.
My name is William Rapp. I live at 31 Dale Drive in Summit. I wanted to thank the council for their approval last year, and I want to pre-thank them for their approval for next year and the expansion. And I hope that this is something that grows and grows, and we see banners on every single post in this flag, light post in the city of Summit. What I would ask is, last year, the banners were on from Memorial Day to the Fourth of July. I would like for the council to consider extending that time from Memorial Day to Veterans Day. I had a number of people that said, gee, that's not up for a very long time. And I think that Memorial Day to Veterans Day would be a more, more appropriate time. And on behalf of myself and a lot, a lot of veterans, I would like you to consider extending the time to Veterans Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander Rapp. Anybody else? Any further discussion by members? Marjorie, please.
Thank you for your support, Mr. Rapp. And I would also like to add that, that actually we have, we have approved the second year. This is actually- This is actually just to get a grant because it costs money, unfortunately, to do these programs. So, year two for 2019 is funded or is approved already by council. We did that over the summer, so, which is great. So, now we're in the process of fundraising for it. So, I just wanted to clarify that point.
What about the dates?
Oh, the dates? Well, the dates, we have, we can talk about it. We have, we did discuss sort of what the dates should be, and there, we had two thoughts about why we went with the dates we did. And one was that leaving them up longer, people start getting kind of, they stop seeing them in a way, like it's nice to have them up, people see them, and then they kind of, you know, they go away and they come back the next year. But that was one thought. The other thought is that there is more wear and tear when you start, the longer you have them out, the faster they wear out, which has a cost associated with it. And we're doing this entirely on donations, and it's an expensive program. So, you know, the first year was sort of the low-hanging fruit, a lot of people donated. The question is, next year, will as many people donate? And, you know, will we be able to do this year after year? And if we leave out, if we leave the banners out longer, you know, we had some problems where trucks would knock into them, banners got, I don't know that, I don't know that the banners got damaged, but a couple brackets did. You know, so there are, there are costs associated with a longer time period, but we certainly can discuss it.
There is a committee that exists, the Hometown Heroes Committee.
I should have said that.
And so I think that's the, where you guys in the committee, there, Henry Bassman behind you is a member of that committee, so I'm sure you guys will all talk in the committee about that. But I think here, tonight, the issue is, having done this this year, we want to make sure we start trying to get funding for it for next year.
I'm just curious how the Providence, Berkeley Heights were able to use them up to Veterans Day.
No, I think-
They actually didn't.
Berkeley Heights?
Oh, maybe-
Okay. We're doing this thing.
Miss Providence. What can we talk about?
We can, it's a question, I think, that's better situated for people who are involved in this, will think through it, and they'll talk about it and they'll figure it out, I'm sure. And they'll come with a recommendation to council. Bernadette? No, 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 you have to come up, give your name and address.
Do I just have a question? My name is Bernie Yeager, I live in Summit. Is that all you?
It would be nice to know your address.
How, no.
Unless you want to keep it hidden from the rest of us.
42 Villa Road, Summit.
Okay, thank you.
How much do these banners cost if they are damaged? Does anyone know?
Paul, do you know?
My recollection is about $69 per banner, but the brackets are the-
How much are they?
They're about $300 a bracket.
The brackets?
Yeah, it's expensive.
So you're looking at about a $400 figure?
For each one.
Yeah.
So, you know, multiplied, it's about an $18,000 project each year.
Okay, so if the individual wants to pay for their families, could they?
I'm sorry?
If the individual wants to pay for their own families, if it's broken, can they?
Well, I think, I think, I think-
That's what I want to know.
Yeah, I understand your question. So, the idea here is that no one has to pay for anything, right? It's not that you pay to get your person up on the banner, right? And so therefore, anybody could make a donation, obviously, and if there's extra money, obviously, if there's something damaged, it would be used for it. But it isn't that one says, "Okay, my particular one is damaged, now go ahead and I'll pay for my particular one." Because then that creates a slippery slope, where people get the impression, "Oh, that person got the banner because they paid for it, I didn't get a banner because I didn't pay for it."
No, no, it was, it got damaged, that's all.
No, I understand, I understand the question.
It was damaged or the bracket was broken.
I think the best thing for people to do is to donate money. There is a Hometown Heroes website, I think.
The best place to do it is through the Summit Area Public Foundation.
Well, I just got an email from them, too.
Yeah, some people-
They're doing something else, too.
Yeah, they're collecting money.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I can clarify what that is, the email, if you want.
Sure.
Okay, the email has to do with a fundraiser that's going on in the downtown with businesses, where we are asking businesses to consider donating percentage of their sales over Veterans Day weekend to benefit the Hometown Heroes Program. And it's a voluntary program, and we hope that businesses will help out with this project.
Okay. Anyone else, please? Okay. No further, is there any further discussion among members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, any abstentions? Great, moving on. Councilwoman Fox, number three.
Hi. Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the installation of a monument honoring two Summit Congressional Medal of Honor recipients on the Village Green. And Lindsay Street Post 322 of the American Legion has proposed an approximately four-foot-high triangular pillar of stone to complement the existing World War I monument on the southwest quadrant of the Village Green. The cost of this monument is approximately $6,900, and will be funded through tax-deductible donations to the American Legion, as well as some foundation money. The city will provide in-kind services to install the monument. Henry Bassman from the American Legion is here this evening to provide a little information on the Medal of Honor winners who are going to be honored. And their heroics took place about 100 years ago, so it's a very fitting time to be honoring them. And I enthusiastically move this resolution.
Second. Okay. Why don't we let Henry come on up, give his presentation, and if members of council at that point in time have questions, they can ask questions.
Bill Rapp and I, when we were planning to come here, had a very lengthy discussion about whether to wear ties or not. But we recalled that most of the people who were dressed common council-wearing ties are running for public office, and we're not campaigning for public office. We're here to recognize two heroes from Summit. Let me start the, this is what the Village Green looks like today. To the left, you see a vertical white stripe, that's the flagpole. In the center is the World War I monument with the angel atop it. And to the right, you can just see a corner of the monument to the mortally wounded men and women from World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. The two men on the left, Sergeant Alan Eggers and Corporal Thomas O'Shea, are the two men from Summit who won the Congressional Medal of Honor. The man on the right is John Latham. He, his hometown was Rutherford, New Jersey. He received, along with the two Summit men, the Medal of Honor. It was the first and only time that three men were awarded the Medal of Honor for the same action. They were involved with the Battle of San Quentin Canal. I, when I first learned about it, had never heard of it. When you, when you talk about World War I, you think about Belleau Woods, or the Argonne, or the Muse, or the Eeps, or, you know, all those other battles. But the San Quentin Canal battle was a really pivotal battle in World War I. It was the first attack along the Hindenburg Line, which was the heavily fortified line dividing Belgium and Germany. Most of World War I was fought in Belgium and in France. When the Americans and the other Allies broke through the Hindenburg Line into the territory of Germany, the Germans knew that they couldn't win the war at last, and they sued for peace. The Battle of San Quentin Canal took place on September 29th. Armistice was 43 days later. So it was really an impressive and important battle. This is an attempt to demonstrate where we would put the monument. You can see the little rectangle facing the winged angel. I have a sample of the stone that we're proposing to use, we can pass that out. I went and I compared the stone to the stone on the World War I monument. It's very close, and it has the same texture. So we want to make something that's complementary to the existing monument. This is an artist's rendering of what it would look like, a Lacy Yeager, a Summit High School student, did this for us. And this is another view of how the area would look. This spring, we met with Paul Casscase, he was very helpful to us, and gave us some very good suggestions, and we appreciate what you've done to help us with this project. This is the citation, and I'll read it to you. "Near La Catale de France, September 29, 1918, becoming separated from their platoon by a smoke barrage, Sergeant Alan L. Eggers and Corporal Thomas E. O'Shea of Summit with Sergeant John C. Latham took cover in a shell hole well within the enemy's lines. Upon hearing a call for help from an American tank which had become disabled 30 yards from them, the three soldiers left their shelter and started toward the tank, under heavy fire from German machine guns and trench mortars. In crossing the fire-swept area, Corporal O'Shea was mortally wounded, but his companions, undeterred, proceeded to the tank, rescued a wounded officer, and assisted two wounded soldiers to cover in a bend of a nearby trench. Sergeant Eggers and Sergeant Latham then returned to the tank in the face of violent fire, dismounted a Hotchkiss machine gun, and took it back to where the wounded men were, heaping off the enemy all day by effective use of the gun, and later bringing it with the wounded men back to American lines under cover of darkness." This was a truly amazing feat. This is the unit to which Eggers and O'Shea belonged. It's the third platoon of the Machine Gun Company of the 107th Regiment of the 27th Division. The 107th Regiment on 29 September suffered the most casualties of any regiment in a single day in World War I. I haven't yet identified which of those men is Eggers and O'Shea. I'm going to get a magnifying glass and try and figure it out. This is a montage of some pictures to kind of help you understand what was going on. The upper left-hand corner is one of the tanks, similar to the tank that they rescued the three men from. In the upper right-hand corner is a rendition of the Americans making the attack, they were the first to go over the top. And in the lower left is a picture of some supporting troops following up the initial assault. You can see that the San Quentin Canal went through a bridge called the Bellicourt Bridge, and then there was land on top of that, not bridge, tunnel, excuse me, the Bellicourt Tunnel. And then there was land on top of that so that, you know, vehicles and people could get across the canal, which was in a ravine. On the lower right is a crew of soldiers serving a Hotchkiss machine gun, just so that you can see what it looks like. Murray Ross told me that the Hotchkiss machine gun was in City Hall for many years, but it disappeared at some point. I'm hoping that it's in a storehouse someplace and we can somehow or another find it.
Cold case.
My last slide is, if you approve this, which we hope you will, we will be asking for contributions from the public to fund the Medal of Honor Monument and maintenance of war memorials in Summit. We'll be asking people to send the donations to the American Legion Post 322, which is a tax-deductible organization, it's 501(c)(19). And it's at a post box, post office box 757, Summit, New Jersey, 0790-20757. I want to show you why we said that we wanted to maintain other war memorials. This is the war memorial for the World War II, Korea, and Vietnam casualties. As you can see, it's pretty well deteriorated. There are parts of the word "those" where there grass is showing through the black, and then where the names are, you can see some of the names are obscured by corrosion or some other deterioration. I spoke to the man who is working with us from New Jersey Headstones for, to find out about what the cost would be. He didn't know, but he said it would be several thousand dollars. We don't know whether we can reface the existing plaques or whether we have to replace them. But that's something we'll look into in the future. I also want to mention that the other fellows, First Foundation, when they heard about this project, volunteered to donate $3,500 in matching donations to this project, which will help us greatly to get a good start on our fundraising campaign. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Do you want to add anything, Bill?
I just wanted to mention that there are actually three Medal of Honors, one for the Army, one for the Navy, one for the Air Force. This monument will have three sides. The initial one will be on the Army, and it will be facing. We plan for the future that if there are additional Summit residents in the future, that would be either for the Army, or the Navy, or the Marines, they would go on the appropriate side, so we don't have to build another one. It is possible that the, we're looking at a four-foot, a four-foot-high one now. We're thinking that it might be either a smaller plaque, or we might want to go with a five, five-foot instead of a four-foot, because four is kind of small. So, the, to perspective of-
Right.
That you saw with that little triangle was not really true scale, but just to give you an idea on position. That picture of the World War II makes that monument look really good. If you really want to be disgusted on what weather can do, as most of us veterans are, you go and walk up to that and take a look at it, and you will really be ashamed. So, I have a feeling that when we put the word out of what we want to do with this project, we will get more than enough money to cover this project. And what we have, we want to put into all of these other projects to do whatever we can to honor the brave men who died in all of these wars. And so I urge you to pass this resolution and let us go forward. Because I figured it's not going to take us long. Now, how long will it take us to do this? We'd love to target and be able to get this done by Memorial Day, or at the latest, you know, we do a amassing of colors and a flag retirement in June, too. One of those two days would be ideal, but I don't want to let grass grow under this project.
And that's 2019?
Say again?
Upcoming year, 2019.
Oh, yeah, 2019, yeah.
How high is the pedestal in the monument that we have already? How, what's the height of the pedestal, do we know, in comparison to-
I, yeah, let me go back to a picture and-
I'm just trying to get perspective on-
That pedestal up to the-
The current pedestal.
If you look here, this is, this top part here is bronze plaques. So there are three pieces of stone, and from the ground to the bottom of the plaques is about five and a half feet, maybe close to six. And then this looks like it's about two feet high. What would you say? What would you say, it's about seven feet to the foot of the angel? Yeah. So, we don't want to overshadow that. And we haven't made any decisions about height. We initially thought four feet would be sufficient, but we talked to Marjorie, and we said, "Let's keep the request as it is now. If, as we get closer to a final design, we feel we need to do something slightly different, we'll come back to you and talk to you." We aren't going to change it without getting your permission.
Okay, fine.
The color rendition, by the way, was done by a Summit High School senior.
Yeah, wonderful. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Mike?
So I, I think last year I did a historical minute on this, because no student showed up, so, I did that. And, Henry, to your point, I ended it with this idea that the gun was actually in council chambers till 1969.
Wow.
And it mysteriously disappeared one night, so, who knows where it is or what have you, but it would be a really neat thing if it's in someone's attic or garage.
Maybe you ought to talk to the construction-
Yeah.
Was the, was the gun used just prior to public comments?
That's what they did in the old days. Yeah, I think it was under lock and key, just for those reasons.
When I first learned about this, it was when I became- When I first learned about this, it was when I became commander of the post, and I was astounded that the only people who knew about it at that time were Murray Ross and Frank Laird.
Yeah.
Who had grown up in Summit and had been active in...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where I found that tidbit, but it's, it's out there.
Yeah.
So it's, it's certainly a rich part of our history, and, and these two gentlemen from, from Summit, I mean, we could be incredibly proud of. I mean, it's, I, it's, I really appreciate you guys doing this. I mean, it's the 100th anniversary of the end of the war, and lines up with the 100th anniversary of this engagement. You know, arguably, certainly I would argue that this was the most consequential conflict in history. And it's fading for so many people. But I, I do know, as part of this anniversary, Peter Jackson is doing a documentary on World War I, and he's actually hired actors to do voice-overs. They, they had people who were lip sync reader, or lip readers, and they've found what these people are talking about. So it's going to really come alive, and I'm really looking forward to it, and I hope people go out and watch it. But this is such an important thing to do, and, and such an impressive thing that we have just, not one, but two Medal of Honor winners from our hometown here.
Right. And, and I thank you for doing the, the historical minute. One of the big motivation behind this, and the reason that we want to have a plaque that describes the action, is so that it won't be forgotten in the future.
Mary, please.
I just want to comment that I'm so excited that you're here tonight, because you've been talking about this for a while.
Yes.
And I'm really glad, and I wholeheartedly support this, and I'm excited for it to go in, so I'm just really happy to see you here.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, yeah, it's great.
Is there any, I didn't ask if there are other members of the public who want to speak or, or comment or have any questions about this?
Sure, I will say that, sure. Thank you, Lindsey.
Yep, that, that, thank you.
We will keep you updated on the, the fundraising.
Right, and, and, and from my perspective, let me just say about the, what we have, the current state of the monument. If, if it turns out that you don't have enough funds, I think you should come back. We should talk about it, because it is incumbent upon, as a community, to take care of these things. It isn't that this should be just like a, "Well, private individuals decided to fund it, and therefore either we do it or we don't." We have a sacred obligation to people who served in for us, who died in, in defense of this country, to take care and honor them. And therefore, if it turns out that we don't raise enough, well, we have, there's plenty of priorities and there's plenty of needs, but I don't think there's a greater need than making sure that people understand that people who sacrifice for this country deserve to be honored.
Thank you for those comments. You, you moved me, and I'm sure what you said was moving to every veteran who hears them.
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Okay, if anyone wants to leave now, there's a second break in this, in this proceeding. You're happy to do so, otherwise you can listen to the works and the closing...
But you're going to miss out the best part.
Yeah.
If you leave now.
You'll miss out on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
The Council President, I want to remind you, the best part is that we're pulling two of the resolutions.
I know, okay, I know. All right, we will move on. Works number one, Councilman Bowman.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Works number one is Resolution 5985, where we are rescinding a prior resolution adopted September 17th, where we were applying for a, a grant with the Department of Transportation. Basically, what's happening is the New Jersey Department of Transportation requires that our resolution properly identify the application in order to process it. The correct identifier is, ready? SST-2019, Summit Pedestrian Transit Access PR-00021. That makes it official. This resolution does not change the information and/or the timing of the processing of the grant. I move, we accept this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion among members of council? Any questions or discussions by members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Works number two, Councilman Bowman.
Okay, Works number two is Resolution 5991, which is to authorize the contract extension with GovDeals, Inc. through March 31st, 2019. Summit, like other New Jersey towns, uses GovDeals to auction our previously used vehicles and equipment. Summit is following New Jersey and extending our contract to New Jersey's, which ends September, or March 31st. We are only able to extend it in that same fashion. We have several vehicles that will be coming up for auction or in the, in the near future, and this gives us ease in using the online service to, so we don't have to be outselling cars and trucks. I move, we accept this resolution?
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions by members of council? Any comments or questions by members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Works number three, Councilman Bowman.
Okay, Resolution 5919, number three. This has authorized a state contract to purchase a Mason dump truck at the cost of $63,400, or $345. We're replacing a 2018 truck with a 2019 truck, and this was included in our 2018 budget. The current truck, while it has low mileage of 41,000 miles, it is hard miles of stopping and going and being used in plows and back and forth. So that does a hard, a lot of hard miles on the vehicle. It is in need of repair at the current cost, they, and expect the cost to repair the current vehicle about $15,000. The replacement vehicle will be outfitted with a stainless steel dump body, which is expected to last a little longer to the salt corrosion. Additionally, the options include a state-of-the-art snowplow accessory pack, allowing for quicker conversion this winter, when the roads will require snow activity. But in addition, it's not just dealing with snow, it's part of the Parks, Recreation, and Shade Trees. It was very involved in the recent storm cleanups, and so it's a dump truck that Parks and Recreation uses, both to maintain the grounds as well as in cleanup. Just so you know, if we approve it tonight, it will probably take 10 to 12 weeks for delivery, so we're looking late 2018 to early 2019, just in time for the winter season, if you will. I move, we accept this resolution?
Second.
Okay, any comments, yes, Mary?
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
You said, I just want to make sure I heard you right, replacing a 2018 with a 2019?
I said eight, I thought.
Oh, 2008.
Oh, I heard eight.
I hate it.
I was like, whoa.
I heard eighteen, too.
Yeah, that's a really good truck, 41,000.
Whoa!
Did you hear it, too?
Yes. I need to punctuate more clearly. Enunciate.
Enunciate, that's it. I thought we had a problem.
Yeah. No wonder my wife and I have no...
Okay, that's why we were all confused.
So I move, we accept this resolution, based on match.
Second.
Matt, please.
Yeah, it looks like a great purchase. I was noticing, it's kind of amazing, actually, the truck itself costs only $30,000, right? But the, the options on it are another $42,000, right? From the dealer.
And, and, and some of these options are, you know, once we get into packages, these are, these are regular, related by the state, so we have to kind of abide by that, and then we get into the, the other things that we want. Want to add anything to that?
So, Council President, so, yeah, they, they have a base price for these vehicles. They're through a state contract, so they actually go out and bid. And then they have, there are options for packages, and whatever option you choose, they have already bid those options. So the option that we're choosing is, which we need, actually, is the $42,000, so...
Right.
A vehicle like that, believe it or not, if you and I went out to purchase this vehicle, is about $76,000, $77,000.
Right, I mean, we're getting it for $73,000 for this, so...
Sixty-three.
Oh, sorry, that's for the next one.
So if you were to purchase it privately, is about $75,000.
Right. Okay. No, thank you, that, this is why we should switch to beet, beet juice for, for the road.
Well, we are saving money by having it painted white.
Rather than salt.
As I've brought up numerous times.
Yes.
Okay.
As, as part of our council reorganization, can we have something that looks at beet juice? We can figure that out.
Well...
That's Matt's committee.
That's Matt's committee.
That'll be out of print by himself.
Doesn't affect the salinity of the rivers, and...
No one grows beets here, Matt.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Paul, it's good, thank you, Paul. Okay, any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're pulling four and five of Works, so we're moving on to six.
So, yes, thank you, Council President, authorizing, this is Resolution 5959. Yeah. Yeah. Which authorized a maintenance agreement for a traffic signal at River and Chatham Road. Previously, there was a, a traffic study which determined a need for the traffic signal at this intersection. As we know, River Road is a county road, so on June 20th, 2017, Common Council approved the resolution to request Union County to install light at this intersection. Finally, Union County has agreed to install this light, and following the installation, the cost, which will be covered by Union County, the cost and responsibility to maintain the traffic signal will be upon the city of Summit. It is, it is anticipated that upon this approval, the signal light will be installed in 2019. Hopefully, with additional signal lights and timers that we are anticipating to be installed on River Road, we'll have a much more even flow going along that side of town. I move, we accept this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Matt?
Oh, okay, I, I just want to say thank you for doing this. I'm so delighted this is going up. When I decided that I was going to run for Common Council, the first street I walked on was Greenfield, and the first resident that I spoke to, so the lifelong Summit resident, he's been on Greenfield for 40-some years, and he cannot get out of his street, just can't make a turn either direction. So I've been thinking about it ever since then, and I'm just delighted for that whole part of town, Greenfield, Lewis, Brainerd, it's going to be great for them, I think.
Mike?
No, just, I didn't meet the same resident as Matt did, but I, I, I share the same sentiment, so I'm, I'm very, very happy that this is happening. It's great.
Anybody, okay, and I'll join Echo as the third of the Board One council members that, yes, we have all heard of the fact that River Road is extremely crowded nowadays. I mean, it's crazy crowded, and, and that has, it's good in some ways, because it shows more economic activity in and around Summit in that area, but it also means that it creates a lot of traffic and congestion for folks, and, and hopefully will help alleviate a little bit of it. Any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Councilmember comments and new business, anyone? Okay, I will just say that tomorrow is a special day for one of us around here by the name of Robert Weck, Chief Weck, whose birthday is tomorrow. So, happy birthday, Chief, from all of us, and thank you for all that you do for this community.
Happy birthday, Chief.
Okay, okay, yes, all right. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you very much.